Good evening. It's 5:37 PM, August 10th, 2021. We're going to be unified. School Board's open session is called Order. We'll start with Pledge Allegiance and Jim is going to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, individual under God, with liberty and rights for all.
Thanks, Jim. That moves us to 4C, report on closed session. There was no report this evening. And that moves us to 4B, which is adoption of the agenda. Dr. Gloria, is there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Thank you. Fellow board members count a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda.
The agenda.
Kelly. I'll second it.
I can.
Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote?
Member Vickers. Member Vickers.
Thank you. You're muted.
Can you hear me?
There, now you go.
Okay, because I've lost all your pictures, but yes, I'm here.
Okay.
And I vote yes on the agenda.
Thank you. Member Kelly.
Yes.
President Osborne.
Yes.
President Normandin.
Yes. Motion carries 4-1. This moves us to 5A. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the 2021-20 school year update COVID-19 protocol?
There are no hands at this time.
Thank you so much. Since there are no comments, Dr. Gloria, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Ms. Weber is going to put the agenda up on the, or the, the agenda, the presentation up on the screen here. Well, as we start the school year, we thought it was an important opportunity for us to provide the board an update as to where things stand. Obviously, we are well aware, things continue to evolve around there quickly. We were seeing, you know, higher case rates of COVID in Orange County, as well as obviously California. So this is all based on what we know today. And I think we all recognize over the last year, plus that we need to be nimble and adaptable and be ready for any, any kind of change that may be coming our way. But this is, this is as of today. I have brought along the entire team, as you can see, in the Hollywood Squares. Simply just in case there are questions that are more site-specific that the board may have one of the site principals to be able to speak to that if there are any questions. But we'll run through a brief presentation highlighting some of the areas that we're focusing on, and then take some questions. If you have a question, you know, during the presentation, please, you can raise your hand or don't hesitate to, to just pause us. So we don't, we don't want you to lose your question. So please feel free to interrupt as we go along. So with that, we'll get going. As we started out last year, we had guiding principles, and we feel it's important to have those guiding principles out in front of the work that we're doing this year as well. We are still focusing on every student every day. We recognize students benefit from on-campus learning, and we see that in the guidance. It comes up regularly, CDC guidance, CDPH guidance. We also recognize that there may be students and families that want an independent study option. So that'll be something we'll talk about tonight. All students should feel safe, and that students and staff need to feel safe, and that we want to follow the most current and scientifically grounded information from CDPH and the Orange County Healthcare Agency. Again, relationships matter. We know that. We've been focusing on this, especially the last year and a half. And we want to continue those positive social interactions with the student peers. I think that was something we all recognized was very much missing when we didn't have our secondaries in person during portions of last year. All students thrive when they feel connected to school. Our students benefit from high, from access to high-quality school-based mental health. We've continued to add in those areas, and I appreciate the board's support in allowing us to add additional positions to support our students in those areas. And lastly, our school community has strengthened through awareness and understanding and embracing of all forms of diversity in our school district. Continuous improvement. This COVID-19 has definitely put this at the forefront as we've continued to evolve as a school district to support the needs of our students and staff. We strive every day to be better. We will continue to do so throughout this next year and in the future. We recognize students benefit from frequent, timely, and essential communication with their teachers and schools. Again, appreciate the board's support. We look forward to having Dr. Spessard with us to help our staff and school sites continue to push out information to ensure we have high levels of communication between our students, families, and schools. All students deserve a rigorous, engaging education that's personalized to meet their unique needs, and that staff are prepared to support our students and each other day in and day out. These are our guiding principles as we move into this next year. And appreciate all the staff's work so far. So we'll review really quickly what the slides will hold. Next slide. We're going to do an overview of the following areas. We have logistics, which takes up a lot of the work that we've been doing. This will include information around vaccines, the masking requirement per CDPH, contact tracing quarantine testing protocols. These continue to evolve, and just grateful for our nurses and Dr. Keller and the staff constantly looking at, you know, what's changed today in this new information. We have other mitigating measures that we've taken, that we took last year. Some of the things we did last year, we weren't continuing with, but we are added new ones. We do have obviously a little bit of a nutrition services update as we're going back to a more normal nutritional service approach. And we have some information regarding busing. We also want to review our instructional plans, which, as you are well aware, returning to full day in person, what independent study options our students have access to and the student supports that we have. So with that, as I said, it's going to be a team approach. I'm going to pass it to Mr. Collin, and he will walk you through the first couple of slides here on logistics.
Thank you, Dr. Gloria. So currently, we did have, we currently have a vaccination self-admission survey out, and of the 180-plus, about over 50% of the staff has responded. 97% of those respondents have stated they are vaccinated, but at this, at this time, just based on the responses, we only, currently, we know that 50% of the staff is currently vaccinated, but we're looking, the deadline to respond to that is Friday of next week. We are offering a, some pop-up clinics at the district parking lot on the Breaker Day and Wave Rider Day for students 12 and up to get the vaccination. We partnered with the Burchards. The information has been sent out via Parent Square, so we encourage you, it's important that you do sign up in advance. So we, if you're interested in that, please look for that, that Parents Word message that's been, that's been sent out several times. And then you'll find several more links to other opportunities for vaccination in the, in the local community. Next slide. So as you are probably aware, we did share this information earlier, but we, masks are required for all indoor school sites when students are on campus, regardless of vaccination level, and as well as required while on the, on the bus at all times. Fully vaccinated staff, per Calooshia guidance, are allowed to remove their mask, but only when there's no students on campus. And then, but masks are optional for all students and staff, regardless of vaccination level, when they're outdoors. And we will have N95 masks on-site for unvaccinated staff. They're interested in those, those masks will have them available at each admin assistance desk. Next slide. Our testing protocol for the 21-22 school year, we have partnered with Ambry Genetics and Orange County Department of Ed to have self-administered mail-in PCR saliva tests available. Every school site has them, as well as the district office. They're available during business hours. There's also a small direction sheet of how do you register the kit? Fill it out, and then it has to need to get dropped off at one of the local FedEx Dropbox locations in town or where you live. And typically, the results come back once the lab receives it. Typically, you, the results get emailed to the individual within about 24 hours. And we'll also be providing those and mandating those, those tests for, for individuals as well. And if you're a close contact or someone who's symptomatic, we'll be giving you that test as, as part of to determine the next steps and when, when you're able to return.
And Mike, real quick, before you jump out, on the masking, I thought I read something. Is there any time that someone has to be masked outdoors, or is that always optional? I thought I read something where there are times when a student might have to be masked, or someone might have to be masked.
It's my understanding that outdoors, the masks are optional. I don't know of a, I have not read a situation where they're mandated outside.
Okay.
It would only be in a situation where a student is on a modified quarantine, and at that juncture, the student would be required to wear one outdoors. There's a lot of confusion in the county right now regarding modified quarantine. We're still trying to navigate exactly what are the parameters and what are the requirements. I'll let Dr. Keller speak a little bit to that. They were talking about it up, right up to the end of the day today. So.
Thank you.
Is the next slide.
Segue.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be speaking with you, Board of Education and the community. And I will be talking about the student contact tracing and quarantine requirements of the very recently published student symptom tree that's published by the Orange County Department of, Orange County Healthcare Agency, excuse me, and, and it's informed by the California Department of Public Health K-12 School Guidance. We've got some very recent information from the August 6 Q and A that really helped to clarify some things. However, you'll find that, as I've found, that it's like herding cats to align the information. So first, we'll start off with students who are vaccinated. Again, I want to separate the, these decision trees from, from what, how we think about staff isolation or quarantine. We want to think about those two differently. So this is specifically for students. So if a student's vaccinated and they're, and they have a close contact, and as a reminder, that's being within six feet for greater than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. If the student does not have symptoms, there's no required quarantine. There's no required testing, although the CDC does recommend testing between days three and five after that exposure, just to, just to be sure about any, any active, active known case. And then you continue to monitor those symptoms through day 14. At any point, if there's an emergence of symptoms based on any of the, of the, of the standard symptoms that are, that are known to us, the student would immediately go on to attend a quarantine. And we would suggest that they also get tested, and then, of course, take care, get care for all of their symptoms and needs. Okay, next slide, please. So Dr. Valoria spoke about this, but about half of our students are under the age of 12, and we have, we certainly understand that they're, they're going to be students that, that don't meet these requirements for vaccinations. So we use caution when we have a, have an exposure, and really, the intent of the state of California's updated guidance were to keep students in school. And how, and the question was, how do you do that safely? And so they've come up with a, I'm going to share this first bullet with you and by the, by the yellow light. So an exposed student who is identified as a close contact, if both the exposed student and the student who was an active case were wearing their mask at the time of the exposure, a student may be eligible for what's called a modified quarantine. They stay in school. Okay, the requirements are listed here. If the student stays in school, we would, of course, notify the Orange County Healthcare Agency of this, of this modified quarantine. We'd be closely monitoring that students, the students required to wear a mask indoors. They're strongly encouraged to wear the mask outdoors during the duration of this quarantine. They're asked to immediately test after the exposure, and then subsequently, three days after that. And then there's an opportunity for students to reduce the duration of their quarantine from a typical 10-day quarantine down to seven days. And you can see by this sixth bullet here, the student quarantine can end after day seven from the last known exposure. If COVID-19 test is negative after day five, so really, it's on day six from the exposure, you would, you would get tested. You would get the results back, and on day eight, the student could return to school if that, if the student has remained symptom-free as, and, and is negative from that COVID test. And additionally, the student on that, on day eight, when they return to school, can start up with their extracurriculars. If, if at any time during that, that quarantine period, that modified quarantine period, the student develops any symptoms from the symptom tree, they're, they're then start a 10-day quarantine period. Now, just to give you a little context from last year, incredible nurses, Pam Madge and Kelly Schultz, they, we had 458 students placed on quarantine over the course of the year, and 90 staff members. And then I just want to remind the board that there were 94 positive cases of COVID-19 last year, and 34 staff members. So we'll continue to follow the guidance as we, as we know and understand it from the, from the state and local healthcare officials, and, and this is a really critical part of prevention.
Dr. Keller, what were those numbers again from last year?
So quarantine was 450, for students, was 458. And our staff were 90. And then we had 94 positive student cases over the course of the year, and 34 staff members.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Keller. Lots of good info there. He and his team have done a great job for us. I'm going to move into the other mitigating factors, and we're going to spend a little bit of time on one specifically later, having to do with outdoor learning space. But just to remind the board, what we've done so far at the start of COVID-19, when the pandemic began, we upgraded all of our air conditioning and heating filters throughout the district, increasing the amount that they, the particulates that they are able to grab out of the air. In addition, we placed HEPA portable air filters in all of our workspaces and classrooms throughout the district. Those two items, those remain in play, and the filters are forever now. It's a practice that we're not going back on. It's MIRK-13 filters and HVAC units, and that's, and that's what we're doing going forward. We continue to promote good hygiene with our staff and students. And then we, of course, have our custodial staff taking care of the commonly-used areas throughout the day for daily disinfecting that's required in the guidelines and recommended. Next slide, please. Other mitigation measures that we're continuing this year is we do, just on the natural, because of all the additional staff, which, some of which are the temporary staff, we reduce the class size averages so that we have smaller classes of students to manage. You can see on the left side of the slide here, you can see what they are. This is based on our current enrollments into each school. When you look at other mitigating factors that we did last year was using outdoor learning spaces. However, we see that based on the new guidance that was released, there's an opportunity here. And we'll go to the next slide. When the guidance came out, Dr. Gloria recognized that outdoor, having masks optional, presented a great opportunity for potential flexibility in terms of our learning spaces. So we could, we were tasked in logistics with researching possible new solutions to increasing outdoor learning spaces for our school sites. This happened very quick, as the board knows. The new guidance came out mid-July. We have several factors that need to be considered when working on school sites, primarily doing or dealing with the Division of State Architect, the very strict in defining what is temporary versus what is permanent, and how long a structure can be placed, as well as the California Department of Public Health guidelines, making sure that we meet all those requirements for what defines an outdoor space in their ads. So if we go to the next slide, logistics had presented some, developed some options, I should say. And we were able to share those options with the principals when they came back towards the end of July. We met with the elementary principals to show them the mock-up. Prior, or after that, we also spoke to the secondary principals, both Thurston and the high school. They were both at the secondary level satisfied with their outdoor spaces that they felt they were sufficient to use for the coming year, and they had good practice based on last year. Over the elementary saw an opportunity, they may need additional outdoor spaces. So one of the things that we were looking at is how do we do that in a way that, one, we could procure the necessary materials? As you know, there's a delay in receiving a lot of items right now. As well as, if we were to create temporary shade spaces, how do we make sure that it is minimal in terms of possible disruptions throughout the school day? And takes advantage of the flexibility that our teachers want in terms of working with small groups and their entire class. So as we worked, the elementary principals were able to review the mock-ups. And then towards the beginning of August, actually, at the very end of July, beginning of August, they were able to meet with their stakeholder groups that involved their teaching staff, as well as some parents, to review what they were looking at in terms of providing outdoor spaces that the students could use throughout the day. And the primary reason is because of that mask optional new requirement, giving the students and our staff an opportunity to go outside on a more frequent basis than just the breaks and the lunches was kind of the desired outcome. So once the, the elementary principals had reviewed that with their committees, the examples included a 10-foot-by-20-foot temporary shade structure, as well as a 10-foot-by-10-foot temporary shade structure with temporary outdoor furniture. We didn't want to have our, our staff moving the, the furniture from indoors to outdoors. One, because the furniture is relatively new in most cases, and is in very good shape, and outdoors is usually not very kind to indoor furniture. And two, it provides us for future flexibility. If we have these additional pop-up tents and outdoor furniture, we can certainly use these for events going in the future. So it's a, it's a worthwhile investment for us going forward. Since then, we've verified that the procurements can occur on time. I have to give a lot of kudos to Ryan Zeta and the principals for working together to identify the furniture and the shade structures that we were going to procure, make sure they're getting here on time, and then set them up accordingly. The current plan, just so the board is aware, is that each grade level at the elementary school will have at least one 10-foot-by-20-foot temporary shade structure space to go to. It is primarily suited by the classroom building so that teachers do not have to walk real far in case there's inclement weather, and they still want to take advantage of the outdoor space. There will also be additional spaces that consist of both 10-foot-by-20-foot, as well as 10-foot-by-10-foot spaces for some, what I would call the ancillary spaces at the school site, so such as the gardens or outdoor areas where they've previously done some outdoor learning classes, but were able to provide additional shades so that they can conduct them longer if they desire to do so. Next slide. As we move into nutrition, and I'm sure the board's aware of this, but it's been positive news in terms of the state level. We have a waiver process that continues the free meals for our students through next school year for the 21-22 school year. And then we transition based on the state's budget to 2022-23 universal meal program. Students, regardless of income level, are provided two free meals a day by the school. At the current rate, just so the board has some indication, now, this isn't going forward to 22-23, but as we look for this coming year, just as an idea, we are reimbursed for our nutrition program each month averaged about $40,000, once we had all the students back on campus. So it's a, it's a good, a good level for us. It gets us back almost to where the students were purchasing meals, although it's still short. But it's good in the sense that we're providing all students meals, because we know how important that is for learning. Next, next slide, please. In terms of transportation, bus passes actually went live for sale yesterday. The capacities for the sale were based on last year's capacities of 27. We ended with 27 per bus. That is for a lot of different reasons. One is we were still operating under the old guidelines until mid-July, so it was hard to anticipate an increase in capacity in the buses without any sort of reference. And two, with the new guidelines, we're able to more easily go into the system and increase capacities on the bus without having to adjust or reset up all the routes, because each bus pass is identified and coded in our credit card system per bus, per route. So there's a lot of different code sequences that go into plugging that in. So now that it's built, we've gone sale. The guidelines allow us to increase our capacity, which is what we're doing. To pre-pandemic levels, our buses will now go back to full capacity. We will still use the mitigation measures that were required, the mask required at all times on the bus, as well as the windows down and open to maximize outdoor airflow. And the bus passes go on sale with these new capacities on Thursday at noon. So we anticipate that a lot of those who were not able to acquire passes yesterday will be able to get passes on Thursday, at least as much as we've had in the past, because, as I mentioned, these are the maximum bus capacities for, for us now, moving forward. And with that, I'll pass it to Dr. Mayberry, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to talk a little bit about our instructional plans here for the start of the school year, which as a reminder, is a little, a little bit less than two weeks away, on August 23rd. But really, I just, I first just wanted to say, we want to state that we know how important it is to our students and their families that our kids are on campus every day of the school year, getting the support they need academically, socially, emotionally. It's a high priority to get our kids back on campus. And as mentioned earlier, with logistics and the protocols that are in place, a full range of mitigating measures, we're able to do that at all of our schools this year. So again, that is starting a little bit less than two weeks away at all of our schools. At the elementary level, if you remember last year, kids were on campus 40 days a week, but they were with their classroom teacher two days a week, and then with, you know, an elective-type teacher, a science teacher, music teacher, and those, art teacher on those other days. So with this change and these mitigating measures, students will be with their classroom, their assigned classroom teacher every day. They'll certainly continue with those activities, those enrichment activities, and those intervention activities, but they will be with their classroom teacher every day this year. And again, at the secondary level, we're going back to full six classes, six-plus classes, year-long classes at both middle and high school, the full bell schedule there all day long. The, we'll have after-school clubs and sports, and then again, we're moving back to regular attendance requirements. So students have to be on campus. We had a temporary ability last year to have a hybrid class or simultaneous teaching, where there was a camera and students in front of the teacher and students behind the camera. That's not, no longer an option based on the new requirements. So students will have to be present, will have to be on campus. And then if kids are out at all for any reason, for being sick, any kind of short-term, less than, less than 15 days, we're going to continue the practice we've had previously, which is what we call short-term independent study. The teachers provide coursework for each day the student's absent. A lot of that will be up on Google Classroom and Canvas for kids to access, or will be sent home with the kids via email or on their, on their last day in class. So that'll be in place for any of the kids that are absent. If you go to the next slide, we also, we, we also recognize that some parents, they have concerns with the current COVID-19 conditions. So for students that whose health will be at risk for, by in-person instruction, we are partnering with OCDE's Home-Based Learning Independent Study Program. So that was for grades TK through 8. That's what they call CHEP, or the Community Home Education Program, or at the high school level, Pacific Coast High School. These programs, we've partnered with these programs in the past for many years. We typically have five to 10 students there in a year for a range of reasons. Could be they're Olympic-level athlete, or they're actors, or they have to be out for an extended amount of time. So we've worked with them. They've been in place for 20, 25 years now. Well-developed programs for any families that need, that need to have, to be out for extended time, really more than 15 days. And then again, families that decide to do that now, will have the option to come back. So we will work with them to find that, to get them back in the class as soon as they're ready to come back on campus and get them in those same classes. And then lastly, if a student does have, does have an IEP for those cases, those are, those are, will be determined through their IEP team as they, as they've done any type of placement in the past. If you go to the next slide, we're talking a little bit about our student supports as they come back on campus.
Chad, quickly.
Sure.
So they don't have to wait for semester end or anything to move back if, if they decide to go in, or if, hopefully not, you know, COVID has longer-term impact on them. They don't have to wait a semester. They can.
That is correct. If you come back at any time, we'll certainly work with the family to see how soon they want to do that. If they want to plan it out timely to, you know, the end of a grading period, or if they're ready to come back right away. Either way, we'll work with them and get them back as soon as they're ready.
Thank you so much.
In regards to student supports for academics, we're continuing, we'll have our universal screeners and diagnostic assessments to monitor student learning over the, you know, especially as we are looking at ways to continue to accelerate learning based on the students in the different variety of learning environments they've had the last year and a half. We're going to monitor that for several years. As mentioned earlier, we'll have smaller class sizes on campus than we've probably ever had in a long time. We're increasing our academic intervention staff. Will be interventions, depending on the school of the day. There's some interventions that we're organizing to be before school, after school, built into the school day, a whole range of them. And then we're continuing to. Uh, and then we're continuing to uh provide, have vertical articulation between the grade levels. So this, this really planning collaboration time between grade levels or subject areas. So that if there are gaps, uh that teachers are aware of them as kids move along. Uh, you know, next, as I said, school's starting a little less than two weeks. Next week, we have a full week of professional development and collaborative time for staff. Um, throughout the district will be a very, very busy week for teachers as they check in with each other and work together and get things ready as as they come back on campus that week prior.
And before you jump forward, Chuck, the smaller class sizes, can you just give us the example? I know it might not end up being exactly that, but just some of the ratios.
And in general, most of them on average will probably be around the low twenties. Um, that doesn't mean that they'll all be there. There could be some that depending on. Uh, situations could get up into the high twenties, maybe even thirty in a case, but. Uh, the vast majority be right around that twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two average. Um, and again, which means of course there'll be some that'll be less than that too.
Thank you.
And then uh next slide here with social emotional student supports. Um, again, we're gonna continue our universal screeners that we've had in place. With the, with the leadership of Dr. Keller, uh we're increasing our mental health support and counseling staff um this year. So there'll be additional staff to work with students and and provide some of that intervention or or guidance. Uh, we're also have, we've increased some of our intervention, targeted interventions for students that may have social emotional uh needs as well as some, we're expanding some of our community. Based partnerships. Uh, and then we're gonna continue the development of the the well spaces uh that we've kind of had plans for a while that got paused a little bit, but. Uh, at the Thurston Middle School and Laguna Beach High School, that that partnership with Chalk and uh OCDE. About those plans are gonna continue to uh. To move along uh and get those in place uh whenever we're able to do that. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to uh Mike Morrison to talk a little bit about technology.
Thank you, Chad. Um, with technology, we're gonna continue to build on what we learned in during COVID. Um, we're going to continue to offer internet access uh hotspots at home for anyone who needs it and. Uh, we have about eighty of those that took us up on it last year, so we'll see how many need it this year. Um, uh. With the Chromebooks, uh we are going to offer those K twelve. Last year, we found out that the the iPads in kindergarten were a little. A bit of a struggle with applications, so we're thinking that Chromebooks is the way to go. So we. Have offered training for those kindergarten teachers and we are implementing Chromebooks in kindergarten this year for the first time. And um we'll continue to use Google Classroom and Canvas. We have guidelines for teachers. And refresher courses for the teachers uh at the beginning of the school year, and we'll be going over those with um with the teachers. Um, for parents and students and staff, we uh will continue to monitor our help desk and make sure they get support uh as quickly as possible.
And Mike, for the at-home internet access, that's even if they're in the regular classes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So. That's a lot of information, I know, in a very short period of time. Um, but I think fairly comprehensive approach. Uh, I do appreciate, obviously. All the staff's work, uh especially our associations and their support. Um, as we continue to get ready to bring our students back, um all students back full time. Uh, obviously, we've been have, have had a busy summer, uh lots of different programs going on, and I know. Um, Ms. Water's been a part of those programs as well, but uh we're here to, happy to answer any questions the board members may have. And again, if uh there are some site-specific questions, um we have our principal here to uh respond as well, so.
And board members, please just jump in and ask questions. You're not being heard. Raise your hand. You'll pop to the front of the queue so we can see.
I'll, I'll start. Maybe I'll ask one or two and then let other people ask a couple. Cause I just wrote mine down on each topic. Um, on the class size reduction, which came up under Mr. Dixon's section, and then again, an instruction. I'm uh, I'm really excited to see that class size down, especially at the secondary level to the twenty to twenty-two range, it sounded like. Um, would somebody be able to give me a sense of what the secondary class sizes were on average pre-pandemic? Cause it just seems like that's gonna be so good for our students. I'm trying to. Um, get a sense of what they were previous.
I'm happy to chime in at the high school. Um, like, like one of our cabinet members said, it it varied from course to course and department to department. Um, we had some intentional focus around some of our um kind of classes on the earlier high school experience in, like an English nine, English ten. Algebra one, geometry, to keep those classes lower per department discretion. Um, so that they could connect with students. This is again pre-COVID, so that they could have a practice of connecting with students. Um, and a a little bit more efficiently. Um, so on average, though, when you look at our master schedule. It was in, I would just say with a conservative estimate, it was on on average class size of twenty-eight to thirty.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have a loud breathing dog in the background that just came back from a walk apparently, or a run, it sounds like.
That's okay. No, that's really helpful. I think that's gonna do a lot for our, our students. And then um. A follow-up question, I think, on instruction for the um. Uh, maybe this is for, for Dr. Vidal, for Joe, on the advisement, that new piece. That uh we're gonna try and connect and build relationships with students. Um, can you explain that a little bit or or give me a little bit more color on on that new piece?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, we have advisement that's gonna be happening three periods, uh Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, thirty minutes. Um, each time, um the focus is really to, you know, connect um students with teachers. That are outside of their typical courses. So, for example, if. You know, you're a sixth grade teacher, you might be having, you know, seventh grade stu- students in your class. Um, those advisement numbers are typically around eighteen to nineteen students, so the ratio is very low. And then there's just certain opportunities to focus in on um continuous improvement for students. So student goal setting, academic reflection. Would be one area or domain really around some of the aspects of relationships matter. So, you know, talking about some social emotional learning competencies. Um, relationship building not only between um uh teacher and student, but also from peer to peer. Um, so connection opportunities there. There's some opportunities also to waive in um school programming, like uh no place for hate and support of that. And and uh, you know, ASB activities that are related to school connectedness. So all in all, it's uh really a great, great way to look at some of our past data and then really knowing that it's gonna. Relationships are really important coming off of this last year and a half. Be able to really ground all of our students, sixth, seventh and eighth grade with um common orientations, et cetera.
I got you. So same teacher, they go to it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for thirty minutes. And then all of those different topics that you just mentioned could be things that are discussed, or they could be more informal conversations with. With kids at that level of the eighteen.
Absolutely, and we had um a group of teachers over the summer. That really dedicated their time to planning around those different domains, reviewing the research back, their best practices. Um, building in routines that, you know, all students will be getting um the same level of experience and opportunities throughout. And then we're really, um our counselors came on board and looked at ways in which they can kind of weave in some of their programming and supports. Um, to help it truly be a tier one practice across our campus.
Great, okay. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Jim, I'll turn it over to you. I know you had your hand up.
You're still muted, Jim. Jim, you're still muted.
Okay. And I was interested knowing about the staffing of how how we were um being able to accommodate these lower class sizes. And what were the budget implications of of doing this? And where did we find these teachers?
So. Mike, I'll speak to the budget impact initially. First part of that question is maybe you can jump in on the second part. Um. Dr. Kelly, to answer your question, budget impact wise, it's uh no real cost to our general fund as all the temporary staff is being paid for by the COVID relief dollars. Um, and then going forward, um all these, these little technology purchases and temporary tents and portable air filters. Everything that you've seen talked about in terms of our mitigation measures, those are also COVID relief dollars used for that, so it's not general fund.
And then.
And staffing?
Yes, so at the elementary level, we just, we have just, just several um temporary teachers that were brought on. Um, to either backfill for um. Uh, staff on leave or um for reduced class size at the, at the high school level, there's an additional staff member brought on at the, at the high school. Um, for that support as well. And then with that, with the addition of the intervention, the expanded um intervention um staffing. It allow when during that intervention time to have the the ratio of of staff to staff to students even lower when we're targeting um our media students. Uh, but with that, we're also in, in a, we're seeing our our enrollment decline sharply as well. So it's kind of. You know, keeping current staff with numbers dropping allows our class sizes to to naturally drop as well. So it's kind of, it's a, it's a combination of factors.
Uh, can I add something from the high school perspective? That's a non-fiscal impact, and that is just more awareness that we've created over the past few years of our concurrent. Uh, or dual enrollment opportunities, as well as promoting our CCA or CTE pathways and CCA courses. Um, those are, the the more we have students involved in those exploratory opportunities, the um. The more I think it impacts uh unintentionally, like our our class size in a, in a positive way. Just uh wanna make sure that we're mindful of that too.
And I wanna make sure that we don't set a um, an expectation that you're gonna walk in uh classrooms and see, you know, twenty-two students. Um, you're gonna see uh at the high school level, because we have students in singletons and doubletons, you could see thirty students in a classroom. Uh, you could go into another classroom and see less than twenty. Um, now the class size averages, they don't come in perfect bundles at secondary level, and it's typically due to student enrollment into. Into what the classes that they go into. So just be aware that, you know, um, when we make a statement like that around class size averages. Uh, that's taking the total enrollment of students and the total staff we have on the campus. Um, but again, because of students enrolling in different courses, um, you know, we, I don't want to set an expectation that. You know, every class is gonna be that low, so. Um, but our intentionality behind that was to add where we needed to add. We did have some overstaffing already in some, some subject areas that we simply were able to absorb. We will look to add additional uh sections to teachers that would uh as needed. So if we do need to reduce a a class size. Because we feel that it's larger than we want it to be, we will determine if we can add, you know, if there's a teacher interested in wanting to teach that course as an additional period. Uh, which oftentimes is, we we use that as a way to uh help alleviate some of those pinch points. Um, we're in the process, obviously, of, we will continue to look at that, uh and that's simply because, uh, you know. As students come back from summer and and Dr. Allman and his team are making sure that, and Joe are making sure that his. Theirs, their students are in the course selections that they've selected to the extent practical, and we'll make those adjustments. But. Uh, we've been in a very lucky position um in our school district. And appreciate, you know, the support of the school board as well as uh, you know, all of the, of HR and and fiscal. Uh, making sure that we have adequate staffing at all of our school sites. So um, everyone's been very proactive. Uh, in planning, and I would, uh, I would say that the site principals have been key. Uh, members of that and making sure that we're, we're ready and poised to support our students and and the best environment we can, so.
And briefly, though, I know that I heard also that. Our enrollment's declining and it has been declining. I didn't want it to be thought that that's because of COVID.
Right, you know.
Just to that for a second.
Right, that, that's a good point. So and and we make the comment around declining enrollment. Uh, the district as a whole has been in declining enrollment for uh for many years, and that's simply related to uh birth rate and. Um, just the the number of of students who live in our area. Um, you know, we continue to kind of meet um our projections at the upper grade level. Um, uh, case in point, we have about three hundred, almost three hundred eleventh graders right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but I think that was the last number. Um, and I know current uh fifth grade is um barely, um, well, isn't even over two hundred. It's uh sub-two-hundred. So you can see just the the cohort of students are much, much smaller as we move forward. And so that's a great clarifying statement, uh President Norman. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members?
Is there a question for um Mr. Dixon? Will the Boys and Girls Club be needing to use our vans?
I would anticipate based on now, um, they may. Uh, I know there, they had a need for one of them at this time. Um, but at the same time, with our buses being fully back online and dropping off, I think that's gonna alleviate most, if not all of their, their demand. Um, so I would say, I think they would always appreciate using our vans, but I don't think they would need it in the same capacity they're using it now.
Thank you. Uh, and this, I have a question for Dr. Allman. Um, as the sports began. Uh, how are we going to communicate to the community if there are any, um, as far as spectators go, is it back to what it was? Uh, completely, or are there going to be certain restrictions?
Well, we will have the same indoor restrictions that we're implementing on campus for indoor uh classroom learning. Um, so uh a gym event would require masking. Um, because that way we will have to monitor distancing indoors. Um, and as we um. Move to our fall uh football program, obviously, you know, having uh fans back in the stands will be a a nice thing for our community. I think an important thing for our student body and our greater school community. Um, and we're wrapping up the hiring process for our new athletic director that will uh be buttoned up by the end of this week. And we'll be working on messaging uh as a whole, once that person's in place. But. We, we have uh been informing our, our, our parents uh through the, the coaching staff. And we'll be ready when our, our events get larger and online with a return to school to inform parents and students of that expectation also.
Thank you. And I just had one uh more question. Um, it was been a while back that there were concerns from incoming sixth graders. About um orientations for the school. And I'm actually not remembering whether we did it virtually or whether you brought the students to the campus at the end of the year. But just um if you could address that briefly for Joe, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, um, this coming up Friday, our way rider day, we're gonna have uh new student and parent orientations that are gonna be available. Um, if they're unable to make it, we also have some plans through our advisement. Um, to offer um their initial steps to being oriented on campus. So we're gonna review all aspects of our school. Um, we also sent home a video that was created by our ASB um leaders last year, kind of walking them through. Um, kind of the different aspects of our school and providing them some information um about the different locations of our school, et cetera. And then we also are going to be planning, um, you know, a special sixth, seventh and eighth grade assemblies. Um, I believe it's the following week after um the first week of school to kind of provide um Keith Hawkins, who had been here at our school before. Provide some motivational discussions, talking about the importance of, you know, uh connecting this to school, being in this together. Um, those different aspects. So I think we have a pretty good staggered approach to um supporting. Uh, not only just new incoming um sixth graders, but all students, knowing that everybody left with a different experience, depending on what grade they love, they were in.
Thank you. I just wanna say that overall, I found all your presentations very informative, and you've done a lot of work. Which is reflected in all the detail in those presentations. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask Jason to talk a little about his new orientation as well, cause uh, uh, Mr. Rudolph did a nice job there, but uh. You know, the high school also has new students, so that'll be nice to have a little round out as to what's happening at the secondary level.
Thanks, Jason, cause I can anticipate the, at least the thinking out loud around that topic. Similar to Joe. We are going to have some focused events for incoming freshmen, but also just new students to our campus, right? Based on what's happened in the last seventeen, eighteen months, we want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable in and in their orientation and return to campus. Additionally, I want to share both at the middle and high school, our student support specialists have been working with a mentoring. Uh, training, and that will start in intensely with students next week. And that will be an ongoing kind of built-in campus culture element that will help bridge some of the foreignness maybe or. Uh, potential isolation that students may experience in their middle or high school experience. So we're excited about that. Um, both Joe and I have released our student support specialists to do some really good, sound, intensive training. With those students. With those students at both the middle and high school level. So I'm excited for that new opportunity for us as a staff, but also new supports in place for our students too. Hope that kind of generally covered that for us. Thanks.
Thanks, Jason. Any other questions from board members?
I had a couple other ones. And this one's for Mr. Dixon. On the outdoor learning spaces, which I thought was so cool. The 10 by, you mentioned the 10 by 20s and the 10 by 10s. And all the work that went into planning those, does either of those fit? For the way that you positioned them fit a whole class where a teacher can take out that, that class in a whole group for direct instruction?
I, I'm not positive to be honest. I missed the committee meeting where they did the walk. I think that was the intent of those, those structures. But at the very least, they could at least have a small group instruction. I know they talked about small group instruction in the 10 by 10s, but I think the intent of the 10 by 20s. And I see Julie shaking her head was to fit the whole class with the idea being that the department would. Identify who's going to the shaded area at what time so that they could share it.
Very cool. Okay, that's great. And then.
Hey, just pause for a second. I'd like to have Julie or Chris kind of elaborate on that because I think. It, it's important. They, they were working with their stakeholder groups to talk about. How those spaces will be used. And I want to make sure one has context as to what, what kind of came out of those conversations.
Yeah, outside the classroom, the 10 by 20s right outside the classroom. Without any furniture in there, you could probably have all the kids standing out there, but that's not how we designed it. We put some tables out there and it's more designed for small group instruction. In the outdoor learning areas like the garden or maybe by PE and things like that, the whole class can fit under. The shaded area. We have some permanent shade structures out there as well. Where we can do some whole class learning, but most of the flexible learning outdoor spaces are designed for small groups of students.
Okay, that makes sense. So maybe like a instructional aid is out with half and then, or some small group. Okay, I see. And. Dr. Hatchell, is it the same for your site?
It's a little different just because the logistics at top of the world are, are obviously different than El Moro. And as we walked the site. We wanted to create an outdoor learning space per, per grade level. Where it was an option for the teachers to be able to take an entire class if they wanted. So we created one, for example, out in the quad area and the G building that you may be familiar with outside the dolphin wall. We created one out by the field space in the kindergarten area. And then one on the field by the baseball. Baseball dugouts. So as we walked around, we thought those would be good spaces. If we need more, we certainly have the flexibility to build more. And in addition to that, we have small group learning spaces outside of each of the classrooms.
That's great. Thanks, guys. And what a nice way to get a little bit of a mask break and get back to normal or at least have a. Little bit of a walk to start the brain up over to them. Okay, this was a question or really just a thank you to Mr. Dixon on the busing. So I am just wanted to send my compliments to you personally for the opening of the second sale for bus passes and. Getting back to our pre pandemic capacities. And I especially was happy to see that that is taking place at noon. I know I got a lot of feedback about the 5:00 AM start date, which. You know, that's a start time part in me. That was a, a, a big issue that I heard a lot about. So I just really appreciate you guys being nimble and. Opening that back up and appreciative of the transportation service provider too with Durham. So. But my question, Mr. Dixon, was just on lunch. Could you elaborate a little bit on? Lunch lines? Just, I, I may have asked this before, there are kids going into the cafeterias, into Wave Rider Cafe or bags being delivered or. How do we anticipate that working? And maybe the sites want to answer it, but I, I get a lot of questions about this, just how the kids actually eat.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Thank you for asking it. It's actually initially, what we learned last year is we know we can deliver lunches to the rooms or to designated spots. That was something we had never done before, but we know we can do it. So we can turn, transition back to that at any time should we need to. But the plan going into this year is to prepare the lunches, still have them individually wrapped. That's still required. So they'll be in the ground bags. And distributed to the students outside near the cafeteria somewhere. So the students would actually be excused to pick up the lunches and go back to wherever seating area they have to eat. But again, like I said, that's the initial plan. If there's any issue with it, we now have some options that. And we're a little more flexible than we thought we could be, thanks to what we learned last year.
Okay. And then we still have the paid accounts if we do. Start to go back to or maybe phase back to à la carte items. I know sometimes it's nice to be able to buy a drink or. Buy a cookie or what have you. I know a lot of the secondary kids appreciate that. We still have those accounts. Active for parents to be able to add money.
We do. We, we only received very few refund requests. So we still have active parent accounts. Yes.
Okay, great. And. That was all my, that was all my, oh no, I had one more. Just compliment for Mr. Conlon on the testing. Going way back to the beginning of the presentation, the, the tests that are available. Are those available for parents to pick up? And would those be available? Like, say, these are the saliva PCR tests. You mail them in, you get the results the next day. That's a change from how we did district wide testing last year, a pretty significant change. Are those available, like starting tomorrow if somebody needed to go down to the district office? Or is that not until school's actually back in session?
They're available now. We have them, each site is stocked as well as the district office. There are for students and staff, but if a parent is in need of one, we have, we have a surplus. Parents also have the ability, as you know, just log on to the Amber Genetics website and you can get one sent directly to your house. But we're, I'm told that the Amber Genetics will have. They'll have plenty in stock all the way through at least December. So we're going to continue to use this as our, our. Our, our testing mechanism for this as opposed to bringing the. Technicians on site in the parking lot, but we're, we're confident. It's, it's convenient. And like you said, you've, I've used it, you use, use it well. It is, it is very convenient. We have three. FedEx applications all in downtown Laguna that make it, the ease of use is, is quite simple.
Okay, yeah, that's great. And my thinking is that if you're a parent, you're picking it up on behalf of your student, but. That's, that's good to know that they're available. Thank you so much for working on that.
My pleasure.
Anything else? Any other questions?
I have one, but before I, I just want to make sure Jim and Jan's questions are answered. My other question on kind of piggybacking on Kelly was. I, I know there are other districts who are offering. Testing of the family or testing of family, staff members, their family. And I didn't know if that's something. We're doing, I, I know they're doing it because it's part of COVID, however, they're using their COVID dollars. I didn't know if it's something we're doing. So that anyone that resides with or lives with can be tested or is it just student stuff?
Right now, our focus is really students and staff. Anybody can get a test from Ambry themselves, the county for free. You know, we, we would prefer to use our supply for, for our students and for our staff members as appropriate. Recognizing again, if people would need one, they can go online and easily get one. You know. It is, it can be harder to get certain ones if you're, you know, wanting to get an urgent test right then there that day. We recognize that, but ours are mailing. And so if you request one at the county website, traditionally they get sent out pretty rapidly via FedEx. You can turn it around pretty quickly and get it, get your results back. So. We don't want to rush on the district office and, you know, to run out of tests before the school year even starts. We have been continuing to order and receive additional tests and Mike will keep inventory of those to make sure that we're. Keeping up with the demand. So.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Good clarification.
And then. I did. I think the only question that wasn't answered out of all these was the, the social emotional screeners. And that support, is that happening? Was it? Because of COVID, I kind of forgot the pace, the rhythm of that testing. Dr. Keller, can someone just speak to it just for a minute of what the?
Yeah. Well, our interest is to do it twice a year, K-12, and. We're really relooking at our secondary screener. So we've already sent out information about, about three different types of screeners. One is the student risk screening scale for students in grades K through three. We have the co-vitality survey. We're really, we're looking at the co-vitality survey as potential and maybe discontinuing the use of that survey. So we're still having some internal conversations around that, but. But that's been really useful for us, but and, and we're thinking about using the Kelvin surveys, which are really short, customizable, confidential. And then enable students to request to see account, sort of if there's some negatively biased quest responses. So. So we, we typically do that in the fall and the spring. Our interest is to let students get settled in a class. We do it after the, after the 30. Hundred days of school entry and then, and typically before November. So usually that administration falls in October and then we do it again in the spring and our, and we do that a little bit. Around the spring break holiday, just so we can ensure that we're following up correctly with students prior to the end of the school year.
Thank you for that reminder. I think with everything else changing, I just kind of, I forgot the rhythm of that. Are there any other questions, Jim or Jan? Let me check one more time. A general comment. I don't see their hands up. I just, I want to thank everyone for all the work. I think we all had hoped there wasn't going to be such a change, all these changes last minute and everything juggling. And just the flexibility and nimbleness that everyone's had. I mean, to keeping everyone safe, kind of recreating, re strengthening that belonging. That I think everyone is, everybody wants to have. And the rhythm of normalcy and, and. And then the options that you're providing everyone within all the review of education. Yeah. So thank you guys for all of your work. And for the presentation in a way that summarized and I'm assuming it's going to be posted somewhere as we could download it, look at, okay.
Correct.
That was very helpful. Thank you. Okay. And I think. I'm gonna look one more time just because there's so many people. I don't have my little simple panel. Let, let me just make sure Jim and Jan are good. I seen them nodding. See them nodding? They're good. Okay. Then. Thanks again, everyone. And with that, we're going to move to 6A, which is consent action. Mr. Conlon, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the MOU between Orange County Department of Education and Lincoln Beach Unified School District? For independent study coordination and services for the 21, 22 school year?
There are no hands up at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Conlon. With that, Dr. Menter, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a, the, we mentioned earlier on independent study option that we're providing districts. When they don't have their program or when it's not feasible due to either financial. Or small student population enrollments, they have the option to either apply for waiver entirely from independent study or. Have a contract or a memorandum of understanding. With the county office of education. And so this is that MOU with Orange County Department of Ed and their programs, which we've had informally in previous years. So with our recommendations and move this forward. To the board for approval for the 2021, 22 school year.
Thank you. Are there any? Questions, not comments or discussion yet, but any questions? For clarification? Board members, if you raise your hand, you'll pop to the top of my screen and then I'll go see you. Okay, I don't see any. So may I have a motion and a second to approve?
They're moved.
They're moved.
Jan and then Jim? Okay, now is there any discussion or? Comments that anyone wants to make? Or who to vote? I want to say thank you for not waiving this and providing this option. I know we're so small that creating separate schools. Would be very difficult right now. Appreciate the work.
And I'd just point out, President Norman, and two things. One, we have an information session. For those that are interested and that has been pushed out to our families. And. In instances where traditionally where a student goes from one district to another. The funding usually follows that student, but because of our community funded status. We actually will not have that same impact necessarily. So. That it doesn't necessarily impact us the same way. It might impact a typical ADA attendance district. We are trying to determine, we will work with. The IP teams and, and Ms. White and her team to determine appropriate placement for students. That identify with as special ed. But those, those will be handled in-house with our team to determine, you know, is the appropriate placement for those students. So. There is going to be a little more conversation in, in certain instances run, ensuring that. Those supports are there for the student based off their needs. So. We look forward to obviously talking with our families that are interested. I will say that the components of the bill that require us to offer the independent study. Put a lot of requirements around communication in the, in the language with the families. So that everyone's very clear as to what it is that the student will be receiving. And that the, the line of communication between students, staff, administration will be very clear so that. If it's not working out, obviously we will make a determination and work with those families to ensure that their students are progressing on their education. So. Again, we bring it forward for your, for an item tonight. And we will continue to keep the board aware of the numbers of students, et cetera, that are, are moving towards this option.
I just have a quick clarifying question. Was. Was this information pushed out to all families or just families that? Had reached out and said they're interested? Like how do, how do they, how do you know a family's interested in this option?
This was, this was sent out to all families last week. Group parents. And then we've had some certainly reach out to us already and we've been meeting with them one-on-one along the way that we're aware of.
I think President Norman, then I did notice that the information session, if you were interested in independent study, I believe Chad can correct me. Is tomorrow or is August 11th? If that's tomorrow.
We'll have that tomorrow at three o'clock. The Zoom link is up on the website and they certainly can reach out to myself or Dr. Canenberg, the Director of Assessment Accountability. And we'll be on there along with some staff from OCDE to kind of answer questions and kind of talk through that process with families.
That's great. And I think I wanted to add to President Norman's comment that. Thank you guys for, you know, getting a, this MOU in front of us. And for having some place that families can go and decide on that if they do. Decide that they don't want to come back to in-person schooling. I did take a look at the. Orange County Department of Ed's program websites for both the K through eight and the nine through 12 program and. Found the information on there fairly comprehensive and fairly welcoming and. The fact that the program has been operating for over 20 years. Makes me confident that they have some experience in independent study and that our, our students will be well served if that's a fit for the family. So. And I agree with the language in the bill that there needs to be a lot of communication between the family and the program and the school district. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other members have questions or comments? Or go to a vote? Jan, you moved forward for some reason on my thing, but maybe you just took off mute.
Is it on mute?
No, it's not.
No, you're good.
Some reason you moved forward on my screen. So I thought you were trying to say something.
No, I don't know.
That's fine. If we're all good, then I'll ask Victoria to conduct a board member roll call.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So the motion carries for one. And that takes us to a 7A. Next regular meeting will. Next regular scheduled business meeting is August 19th, 2021. And I'm going to move for us to adjourn to this meeting if I can have a second.
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 Okay, and Jan's second. Assuming there's no discussion, but supposed to ask. Okay, as a reminder, be being 9200 when we adjourn, the board is no longer seated and thus we have no individual authority. Until we're seated again. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call?
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, the motion carries for one. And the meeting is adjourned and the time is 6:47 PM. Thanks, everyone. Really appreciate the great discussion, all the information.